But there's certainly some financial.
And so we could get started.
We can start it. We can get started whenever you want, Dennis is fine.
So, um, you know, this Dennis Borella, Ken Aident, tonight we have Mike Burton on to talk to us about football at his time in the, in the sport, a coordinator, director, commissioner, and all his other special hats that he's worn over the many years. Mr. Burton, he was the commissioner of the Northwest Football Official Associations for almost 25 years. In 2000, he received the Citation Award winner for officiating excellence from the NFHS and was named into the National Hall of Fame in 2015. 2009, he was inducted into the Washington, I believe it's the Washington State Official Association Hall of Fame. He named the GNAC Coordinator of Football Officials from, in 2005, and he held that position till 2019, when he was hired as the First Division Two National Director of Football Officials for the NCAA. Those are just some of the things that he's done. He's been a crew mentor. He's been guest speakers at multiple camps or clinics across the country. We're talking earlier, he's done quite a few of these webinars this, this spring, so he continues to, to teach, even though we can't meet the face to face, and we really appreciate you joining us and talking to, uh, the New Mexico Officials Association, uh, high school football officials in the state of New Mexico, and anybody else joining us, uh, in any other state. I know we blasted this out to quite a few associations in, in a few states to see if anybody was interested to hear what, uh, the big boss had to say today. So with that, if anybody has any questions, go ahead and put it in the chat room. Uh, we'll give you, uh, an opportunity to ask Mr. Burton questions. And, um, it's yours. We'll, we'll see when Dana comes on and then, um, I'm sure she'll want to talk just for a second, um, when the time's right.
Sounds good, Dennis. Well, thank you so much, and I just appreciate you guys having me on. You know, it's just, uh, great to see this going on. I've had a chance to watch some of the other presentations, and they've been outstanding, uh, on it. I'm gonna give you a little less technical. I'm not gonna talk so much about the bells and whistles, the mechanics, or whatever else of football today. I'm gonna really kind of divide it into three parts. I'm gonna kind of give you a background. I think probably you'll be interested about what's happening to college football. You know, what's gonna happen in 2020? And am I gonna be able to watch any football games for those of you that are officiating? Are you gonna be able to officiate any football games? And then leave a chance open for any questions at that point. And then talk a little bit about how you can make yourself a better official, either at the high school level, or if you do want to go higher, again, how can I become, uh, that way? And then the final, the third part, which I think is really the most important part, is keeping your life in perspective. As you're trying to be an official and be a, a parent, be a husband or a wife, and things of that nature. So, Dennis said, uh, right, I started officiating in 1965. I was back in the, the time of rod cloth and red flags, uh, to begin with. In fact, my first high school game was a three, a three man game. Worked my way up into the college ranks, continued that, and retired off the field in 2000, and then, uh, moved into the administrative part of it. Did some observing and then worked, uh, have worked with the NCUAG GNAC, the Division Two, since 2005. In 2019, the NC2A decided to have a National Director of Division Two Football. Applied for the job and was then hired for it. Uh, and have continued that. I've had my first year last year, uh, went very well. My job is really number one, to get the best crews forward. I know in New Mexico, then you've got crews that want to advance, want to be in the state playoffs. That's basically my job in the fall, uh, is to find who are the best officials and advance them into the playoffs. We start out with 16 conferences around the nation. We end up with about 40 crews that are recommended by their coordinators. From those 40 crews, uh, we selected 18 to work in rounds one and two of the national playoffs. And that's in itself an honor. But then the biggest cut comes after the first two rounds to work the quarterfinals, and after, we selected five crews. Uh, and then finally to the national championship, which was held in December in McKinney, Texas. So that's my, that's my, one of my jobs, my big, probably my biggest job. The number two thing is to try to get more communication between those 16 coordinators. Try to get everybody on the same page mechanically and philosophy wise and whatever. To do that, uh, right, right now, uh, with where we are, I'm going ahead and I'm calling each coordinator at least once every two weeks, talking to them, you know, what are their issues? What are their problems and what's going on? And my, my real career was a high school speech and debate coach for 35 years. Luckily enough to have some great kids and some great administrators. And so that was an area that I also enjoyed. And I think it really does help me as I'm giving presentations, and then also, um, you know, working with people. What's going on in the NC2A? First issue today. Boy, D2 and D3 right now, uh, our situation is that, you know, we may have a different season than Division One does, very honestly. The NC2A has really already said that all of their meetings for 2020 will become tele, telecommunications, teleconferences. The NC2A office is closed until at least May 15th. No travel is allowed until the end of June for any NC2A activities. I've already told my 16 coordinators that they should plan on a, a telecommunicating type conference that will not be a physical conference this year. Our CFO meeting, which is the Division One coordinators, has continued to be pushed back. Next week, I'll have a, a, a conference call to decide what we're gonna be doing with that. Are we actually gonna have a meeting? Will it also be a teleconference for the Division One coordinators? Our Division Two and Three Conference that was to help be held in Indianapolis on July 9th will be a teleconference. Uh, and so this is what's, what's occurring right now. The Division One, I think the question is, you know, will there be a season? And I think there probably will be. The Power Five Conferences, if they do not have football, will lose $4.1 billion. Okay, $4.1 billion. But I think their season could clearly be different than our Division Two and Division Three. Uh, I don't know if our people are gonna be able to do it or not. And we have to also look at the fact we're talking about volleyball, we're talking about cross-country, we're talking about other sports also. So we're gonna have to see what we can do at that point. The difference between a, a state and high school, uh, sports, and we talked about the fact that probably New Mexico and Arizona and some other states by will try to go together. Our issues, we're dealing with 50 states. And what happens, let's say if it's a Mountain West situation where we have got one state that has opened up completely, and they're ready to have fans at their stadium, and then you've got another school coming from another state, or they're going there, where they're still saying, hey, no large gatherings, no people over 10. What do you do if you have a situation that a team flies someplace? They were tested maybe before they got on the airplane. They retest them when they get to the facility, and somebody tests positive for the virus. Now what do we do at that point? So I, that's one of the things I've got going right now, is certainly a lot of, of meetings and conferencing uh, on video about what are we gonna do at this point, at, at that nature? And it's gonna be kind of an interesting situation. The other issue that we are having at this point is the actual loss of schools at the Division Two level and other levels. Urbana, which was a school out of, uh, Urbana, Ohio, just announced last Monday that they are now closing and they will not be coming back as a school. We have lost about five or six Division Two schools for actually just closing their doors. The Court of Portland, uh, Notre Dame Small Campus in California, the Art Institute of San Francisco, uh, McMurray, which was a Division Three school, have all decided that they are not gonna open again. And I would think very honestly, you're gonna see probably five or six other schools that actually do not make it to the fall semester. We've lost, uh, two programs in the Northern Sun who've decided not to play football. Uh, and so it's gonna be kind of interesting. Loss of funds from the NC2A, the NC2A distributes money back to all the schools. Division Three, the total loss there was $22 million. The D3 schools did not get. And they figured that those schools lost approximately $7.6 million in student fees. D2, the loss was $30 million and about $18 million in student fees that they lost. So many of our athletic programs are really in the hole, uh, regarding, you know, the fall, fall, fall part. New Mexico, the University of New Mexico, for example, at a Division One level, lost, uh, three quarters of a million dollars from the NC2A distribution. Uh, New Mexico State lost a half million dollars at that point. Both of them lost student, uh, fees. Uh, they figure probably the New Mexico situ, uh, numbers that I saw, they thought that the University of New Mexico lost over a million dollars, uh, this last spring, and New Mexico State was closer to about $750,000. So, you know, how do they gain that back? Are they able to gain it back? Is every school and every conference able to, to play every sport? Some of the things I've heard, been talking about, of course, number one is no season at all. Uh, there have been some people that have said that there probably will not be, uh, fall sports. I think that's the worst case scenario. Uh, the one I've heard probably the most presented is a partial season, where either like in the Division Ones, they start practice September 1, and they start playing sometime in October. For our Division Two and our Division Three schools, or NEI schools, that they will start later, and they may play six games or seven games, and then we'll go into an abbreviated playoff type situation of that nature. No fans is really not, I think, an option for B2 and D3. It might be an option for Division One with their, their television, uh, contracts and so forth, that they might be able to do that. But, uh, the NC2A right now, I think, is trying to do everything they possibly can. You know, they're talking to the medical people. Uh, they don't want to make the decision too soon. One of the things I've always found with football officials is, you know, there's that, that underlying, you know, gossip, uh, phone calls and emails and texts. A lot of people want to know right now what's going on, and I don't think really we, we can say that right now we know what's gonna happen. I think it's a matter that we're gonna have a number of meetings. It's gonna be a, a period of time before we finally make a decision, hey, this is what we can do for the 2020 season. I'm going ahead as the National Director to say, hey, we are gonna have a season. You know, we want to have, uh, virtual clinics for all 16 of our conferences. Uh, we want to do those things at that point. Something else is gonna have to happen, and this is the tough part of it, in losing programs, and I'm talking to the coordinators about this, what do they do with their staffing? In other words, do you, you know, again, Northern Sun's a good example. They've lost two schools. They really don't, they've got one too many crews. At this point, do you reduce your staffing? And some people are not gonna be working for anymore. You put somebody as kind of standbys or, you know, whatever, do it that way. Or do you spread the, the pain around, uh, and, you know, everybody loses maybe one or two assignments? Now, for some areas, they can pick up junior college, they can pick up NEIA if they're a Division Two program. Uh, they can pick up some, maybe some Division Threes games, you know, so that's not so bad for them. But for somebody that's on a staff, and there are no other places to find games, that's gonna be causing an issue. So, I mean, that's something we're gonna have to look at too, uh, over the next, the next amount of time. So clearly, there's some, some things going on there that we're gonna have to take a look at and see what's going on. Questions on that part? This is my first part. Anything, uh, the questions, uh, Dennis or anybody else might have that they want to know about at that point?
So Dana, um, go ahead. Yeah, Dana, Dana Pappas is on. I wanted to see if she had any questions on how that's gonna trickle down to her decision making, uh, at the state level, at the New Mexico State level, at the class level.
She might have some points there, so that'd be great to hear from her.
Dennis, she is working two webinars right now simultaneously.
I just walked back in. Sorry, I had to go check on softball. I had to, uh, I have softball going in one room, and I moved this laptop in the other room, so I'm walking up and down my hall. So what is, what did I miss? What, what can I do for you? And thank you, Mike, for being with us tonight.
So, yeah, so Mike was just discussing about, um, the decisions at the Division One and down to Division Two level, and his abbreviated schedule of having a season, the loss of revenue. The season might start as late as September for practice games into October for Division One and Division Two, e- even maybe later to that with even a more abbreviated schedule. And so my question was, uh, how, how do you think that translates, uh, to your decision? When you make your decisions, when it's gonna affect the high school associations and, um, because it, you know, everything does trickle down from what we see at the national level.
Oh, it absolutely does. Um, I mean, I can speak to, I was in here when Mike was talking about the loss of revenue. What I do know is not having the entire game, softball for the main, um, not having state championships and not having spring sports with about a $650,000 hit, that's in the next practice. So obviously, the, the financial issue will be large for us if we enter the next four years. I would imagine that we will continue to follow what's going on at the, at the divisional level, hopefully make the season. And obviously, we're, every day we're getting different information from the governor's office and the state attorney and the state agency and all the other organizations. So at this point, we're kind of in a, you know, we're in our holding pattern a little bit. We have a board meeting on May 15th, I'm sorry to exchange that. And I'm sure that fall sports will be a missed item, but there's already talks nationally, I haven't heard anything in New Mexico, but there's already talks nationally about a bleeding of schedules and that kind of thing. We're hoping it doesn't come to that, but, um, you know, it'll be difficult to say the same thing, staying, um, with that kind of loss of revenue from spring and, you know, the support. So that's why, you know, in New Mexico, it's a, in part of our revenue, um, and events, and not have it, and not have state championships, games in basketball once a year. So we're, we're looking at budget, and it's like everybody is, and waiting to hear from the powers that be above us.
Thanks, Dana.
Thank you, Dana.
Of course.
So Mike, there is a question that was posted as far as, um, the virtual clinics for Division Two. There, there's a few guys that are in the webinar that, um, have joined, um, the weekly test sessions, study sessions. Right. And that, so they're not, um, they haven't even been looked at at a clinic. They're just, you know, trying to get their foot in the door with rules knowledge. And the question was, um, will they be able to participate in any of these virtual clinics at, um, you know, RMAC or Lone Star or wherever, even though they're not officially in any program or even been looked at by a coordinator?
Whereas at that point, right. Yeah, and I'm gonna really try to emphasize to my coordinators that to try to, to reach out to some of the younger people, uh, and get them involved. You know, many of these programs do not have necessarily a limitation. Some do, but many of them don't have a limitation number of participants. And I think it's a good thing to get those people involved and, um, you know, I think one of the things that's happened, you guys, and I'll, I'll talk about this in my next session, but, yeah, reaching out and saying, hey, I'd really like to be part of that's a great thing. Two of my former officials, Tyler Olson and Dwayne Johnson, are doing that Rule 11, you know, the podcast. I've got a number of my former guys and guys that are very much involved in, in doing things online. And I think anything that you can do as a young person to try to advance yourself, and maybe talk to one of the senior guys, and I'll be bringing this up with my coordinators, that, hey, you know, let, let those young guys get on. Let them listen in. I know MIAA, for example, their crews, and every crew has got a candidate that works with them, is involved with them, goes to most of their games, uh, and I think that is, that is really important. Uh, I see one other one here, you know, if somebody asks about, do you think that referees will be tested for the virus? I would think probably that's gonna happen. I mean, very honestly, I think when we, we go into a stadium situation, and not only the game officials, the supplemental officials, everybody's gonna be working that game. Probably something that, that will, there will be some type of testing. Hopefully by that time, that it's much simpler, uh, to do, uh, and have it that way. And, uh, and that is the biggest fear I hear from the NC2A medical people is, you know, again, transmission of the virus, uh, from one person to another, especially when somebody is, you know, does not have a temperature, you know, uh, of that nature. So I think that's gonna be something we're gonna have to work at. Okay, well, let me talk a little bit, you guys. My, my second topic is talks a little bit about, you know, how to, to make yourself a, a better official, either at the high school or, again, if you want to advance at the college level. I, I was lucky enough to work, uh, you know, high school and college football for some 35 years, uh, and work, uh, you know, national championship at the college level, and worked some nine state championships when I was working. Uh, one of the comments I would always make, you've probably heard it before, is don't be that guy. I mean, don't be the guy that nobody wants to be involved with. Very honestly, when I was a coordinator, many times I had to release somebody, not because of their on-field ability, but it was their off-field situation. I had one, one official that very honestly had a tough time with alcoholism. And, uh, you know, hey, that's just something you cannot have. You can't have drug usage, you can't have a problem with alcohol. Uh, and it was somebody, he was a great on-field official, but it was the other problems, the before the game, the after the game, uh, that became a situation. A good example was a number of years ago, I was at Stars and Stripes, and we're all sitting around a table having a meal. Uh, and basically, everybody gets up afterwards, and you look at the Division One guys, all the coordinators, everybody was dropping a dollar or two on the tables, a tip for the servers. Uh, there was a guy that was a candidate for me, didn't leave a tip. That's, that's not what you want to do. You don't want to be, you know, somebody that stands out for the wrong reasons at that point. Uh, I, you know, was, was down at, uh, Tim Crowley's, uh, winter, uh, clinic, and was down there, and there was one individual, boy, he looks good, and I've seen him on film, he looks great that way, but the guy just talks about himself and talks about what he's doing all the time. I believe that you want to listen, you want to listen, and you want to listen again. You know, keep your mouth shut, just listen, and try to pick up stuff. Just try to, to steal, uh, you know, some good things from people. One high school official that I worked with, uh, for a few years, kind of the middle of the road by in my local association. A lot of times that you've got a watering hole that you go to, uh, after the games on Friday nights. Uh, and, uh, we'd all sit around, and then at the end of the night, we kind of tossed all the change in the middle of the table for, you know, the, again, the waiter, waitress. And one of our guys went in one day, was a businessman, and was talking to this gal. And he said, well, how are things going? How are the tips going? And she kind of got a funny look on her face. We found out that this one official, high school official, was waiting until after everybody left, and he was picking up the money that was being left for a tip. But that's not something to be known for. So one of the things I would talk about, you know, is, boy, just do everything you can to be a, a good crewmate. Be the person that people want to travel three or four hours in the car with. Uh, you know, don't be, be phony. Do everything you can, I think, off the field is so darn important. It's even almost more important than on the field. Certainly knowing the rules. You know, I've been listening in, I'm doing some presentations for a Division Three conference back on the East Coast, the Centennial. And one of the things that, uh, Jim Capora, that's their coordinator, talks about, he's an ACC official, is he reads, uh, the rulebook every day. And I don't think you necessarily have to read it every day, but, you know, you can do all the video you want, you can do all the on, on stuff. You gotta read the rulebook. Uh, and the, that person that becomes that expert, uh, when I was looking for people to hire, I wanted to know that, hey, this person is somebody that, you know, like, we could count on a crew to really be a, a, a good example and do it from there. I think another thing is your physical image. Uh, I've gone to the Front Range High School Camp of Northern Colorado, uh, the last few years. Uh, and it's interesting as a coordinator, it's the first thing, and that's the first thing I look for in a video. Last year in Division Two, uh, to get ready for the playoffs, I watched 120 hours of, uh, video from across the country. First thing I look at in the first three or four plays is how is everybody moving? Uh, it's your, it's your physical image. It's not just your physical size, but it's, you know, how do you look in your uniform? How do you move? Do you move well? Do you move athletically? I had one of my officials that ended up working for the Big Sky. A great guy, great rules guy, great, uh, crewmate. But I told him, I said, Mark, uh, you, you run, you know, you know, like, you gotta broom up a certain part of your body. I mean, you know, he was, he was a clatter. Uh, and I said, you gotta get out to your, your high school track coach and learn how to physically run correctly. Uh, and he did, and he ended up working for the Big Sky. So I think that's one of the thing, and other things you do is your physical image. Look at yourself. How do you look out there? Uh, and what do you go from there? Uh, I think you need to be a leader, uh, like I talk about with, uh, Rule 11, but just your local high school association, trying to be a leader. Not because you want to do it because that, you think that'll help you get a playoff game, but that the fact that you really do want to help other officials uh, and be a leader in your local associations. I think that's a high, high priority, uh, and something you want to do. So I think, again, you know, not being that guy, being somebody people like being around, like to socialize with, like to travel with. You know, you know, be a, a positive person with the rules, know the rules, read the rulebook, be at the high school book or the college book. And be a rules person. Well, I think one of the things that made, made me, because I was a big guy, you know, I did not have a great physique, but the people knew me as a rule guy. And I think that really hel, helps. And then also try to have that good physical image. Be a, uh, you know, a great, uh, uh, physical person out there as best you can be. You may not be perfect, but try to do what you can, and then also be a leader. So that's the second part. And anything else on that one?
Go, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, if you want to touch real quick on, on, um, the social media aspect of, uh, individuals.
Yeah. Great, great comment. I mean, really tough. Boy, I tell you, guys, I mean, there's so much on this Facebook and Twitter and whatever else. I mean, hey, you know, you, you've got to go ahead and, and be careful what you put on there. I've always told my officials, I do not want anything on there as far as before the game, whatever. Uh, I remember the story of one of the D1 coordinators talked about that, uh, was actually, I think, a Big 12 situation where he had a guy that would want to put a schedule on there, and he told the guy not to do it. The guy did it again, and, and they did not have that schedule anymore. He had a lot of extra Saturdays off. And I think that's one of the things you gotta be careful about. And you really can't be a fan. Uh, I had a young official that was working for me, big San Francisco 49er fan. I mean, everything he had, you know, in his house and the den and, you know, the man room was, uh, 49er. And they're playing the Seattle Seahawks one time, and something happened at the end of the game, and oh, God, he goes off, off on Facebook on the officials. And I, you know, had to make a call to him, just say, hey, you're an official, you don't do that. You do not, uh, you know, uh, say things about other officials in other sports or whatever else. Just keep your mouth shut. So I think that's one thing you gotta be careful about. Very careful. If you look at my Facebook page, you're gonna see lots of stuff about what, about family, friends. You see nothing political. You see nothing about, you know, officiating necessarily. Uh, I just stay off it.
Great, thank you, Mike. Uh, does anybody have any questions, uh, before we move on to the next topic?
Okay, the, the last one, you guys, and I think this is probably, this is why I leave it last, is, is, uh, keep your life in perspective. You know, I, I'm a believer, uh, so my, my view is God, family, real job, and football is sport. And I think sometimes, as I've gone to clinics and camps and, and whatever else, I see people that are not keeping their life in, in perspective. Football ends up coming, maybe family or other things that should be probably more important. And, uh, I'm, I'm really lucky. Jan, my wife, is a, she's a football person. She loves to watch football. She's sometimes not real sure about officials, but she likes football. She's an old Nebraskan. She gets to travel with me quite a bit, which is great. Uh, I think that's something important, but you, you have to keep things in perspective. And I go back to when the Reno camp was still being used. I was mentoring there, uh, and there was a young guy from down the southern part of the United States was there. He was on my, my crew. And so he and I got a chance to talk quite a bit. Uh, he'd worked his way up to Division Three. He really wanted to move up to Division Two and then Division One. I mean, big time. I mean, this guy had blood coming out of his mouth, and he was there for three or four years in a row. I'm talking to him, uh, the last year that I saw him, and he said, yeah, he said, God, we really wanted to come to this camp. And so he sold his wife's car for the registration to come to the Reno camp. Now, I don't think I would dare do that because I want to stay above the ground. But basically then, at the end, they always had a banquet at the end of the Reno camp, and they announced those guys that had moved up, or we're gonna get a game in Division One. But basically then at the end, they always had a banquet at the end of the Reno camp and they announced those guys that had moved up or were going to get a game in Division One. And I walked out of the banquet room and here this guy was, he was actually crying out in the lobby. I mean, he'd done everything he could, he'd done more, and at that point he just hadn't made it. I never did hear if he did make it or not, but I think unfortunately he did not. But I look at that as somebody that does not have your life in the proper order. I mean, you just cannot do that. And I've seen other people over my years that are just, gosh darn it, you know, they, they want it so badly. They want to advance, you know, they, they just don't do a very good job of keeping their life in perspective, keeping God there and your family and your real job is, is important. And I think that, that's highly important. Because you make, you make the, the big time wherever you're at. There was a great football coach at Pacific Luther University called Rossy Westring. And he talked about that. He talked about make the big time at the level you're at. And I think that's so darn important. And I think I see people each day that sometimes don't do that. And I think that's something that, you know, you have to be very, very careful about. That one official that, for example, was drinking had a drinking problem, I ended up having to fire in the middle of the season. His dad is a former Division One football official. He tried to come back, work in another conference, ended up getting fired from that and he's no longer working college football. So I, I think that is something you have to be aware of. You know, I've got two rings on my hand. This one is a national championship in two thousand sixteen ring. It's nice, it's important, but the one that's a heck of a lot more important is the one that's on this, this hand and that's my, my wedding ring. It's so much more important, you guys. So that'd be my last kind of comment to you. Hope we're going to have a great season, hope things are going to go well. I think they will. But keep your life in perspective, keep things positive and keep moving forward. So Dennis, hey, thanks for having me, I sure appreciate it.
Thank you sir, thank you Mr. Burton.
Yeah, thank you sir.
Appreciate your time this evening.
All right, I think, I think you had to run. Oh, no, there he is. Does anybody have any questions? Do you have time for one question, Mike?
You bet.
So I know that I've heard you say in the past about your, your recruitment, your footprint when you were in G NAC. You do have a lot of influence over the Division Two individual coordinators. Do you still find yourself out at high school games, just on a Friday night? Seeing some, some high school official and saying, hey, this guy needs to be looked at. Cause I know you have made, made the comment in the past that you don't hire officials at camps. You might identify them at camps. And then can you just talk us through that process on how you identify somebody at a camp and the process you go through before you make a decision to hire them into a deep?
Into, into a higher level. And I, yeah, I still do. In fact, that's probably one of the biggest things that I do on the side or I, I really try to do is I see a good young official and, and there's one guy I can think of right now, the Idaho that I've recommended to somebody else and said, hey, this is somebody you really want to keep an eye on. You know, you want to take a look and see what he's going on. And what I do, you guys, very honestly, it's kind of funny, I, I enjoy watching football games, but my wife says, I never know what the score is, I'm always watching the officials. And so what I will go ahead and do is I will usually take a look, and I'd say the same thing on video, I, I watched all the officials for a while. See how they're moving, see what's going on with the crew, communicating, who seems to be stepping up and whatever. And sometimes, very honestly, one of the, the color brothers, there's two Dale's, Dale, Dale and his brother are both out of, out of the Las Vegas Reno area. And actually one of them, I think it was Dale, I found when I was going to a junior college game, I was down watching a D two game and I decided to go out and watch the J C game in the, in the afternoon. And I was actually looking at another official and then boy, I saw him, I said, boy, this kid looks really good. So again, I still very much are involved. And, and what I look for is I look for, how does that official communicate with his crew? Is he somebody that steps up in a situation where maybe that crew needs help? How does he communicate with the sideline? I've seen some officials that kind of shy away from communicating with the coaches and and, and for you guys, I'm a great believer that you just overwhelm that coach with information. I mean, keep him involved, you know, make sure you respond to him between quarters, you know, swing by, say, hey, coach, everything going okay? You don't have to have a long conversation, but just make sure that, you know, he knows that you're talking to him. I think that's, you know, a, a great thing to do. So communication with the sideline, communication with your fellow officials, physically, how does he look? You know, and judgment calls, I mean, if you're looking at a game, and I will usually watch a half a game on video and maybe a half a game, if I'm going to the game, go to another one. I mean, if he had a call, you know, what, how did it look? How did he handle it? Especially if it was a call that was a tough call on that. And then I keep, I just got a spreadsheet, I just keep a track of officials of whatever's happening, you know, in, in an area. And if I talk to Jack Childress down in South Atlantic Conference area and I've seen somebody to a camp and I'm still going to camps, I'm still going to high school games, it's just something I enjoy doing. And I, I'm a type of guy, if you've ever seen me at a camp, I don't want to sit with anybody. I see people come in and there'd be fifteen or sixteen of them, a lot of kinds of coordinators and some of the, you know, the Division One guys and they all sit. And they're kind of all talking to people and whatever else. Hey, I'm there to evaluate officials. So I just get off. In fact, you'll see me as like Stars and Stripes, I mean, I, I sit on the visitor's side, you know, for the game. I sit over there, ball by myself. And I, that's how I, I figure out if this is, you know, somebody that I think will, will work up. I've been really lucky, I think I've got now sixty-six or sixty-seven of my officials who are now working Division One. I've got three guys that are now in the NFL. And I don't think that's all me, I just think that I do, I do a pretty good job of evaluating talent. I know Carl Richens, the Big Sky coordinator, will always call me many times and say, hey, Mike, I'm, I'm looking at Southern California or I'm looking at, you know, Arizona. Who do, what do you think about this guy? And will ask me about it. And I think that's one of the things that I, I'm proud of. But I think one of the things that you as an official want to do is just, you know, be a communicator. Make, don't shy away from that sideline. If you, you know, if you think there's something going on with your crew, you know, come in, try to be that rule person. Physically look good, handle things. I think those are the important things I look for.
This is Ken. Yeah, my S A S A group is, has been discussing that exact topic of communication with coaches, communication on the field. I'm glad you touched on that. Thank you sir.
You bet.
Yeah, and I think that's a, a great segue for us because I, I believe here on May seventh or the twenty-first, we are going to have a coaches and officials webinar and the topic of discussion is coaches' concerns versus officials' concerns. And I think the, the the communication point on that is going to be huge. And so that's going to, that just put a bug in, in quite a few guys' ears. And hopefully that they, they log in and, and listen to that webinar next week. Does anybody else have, have any questions for, for Mike?
You can unmute and ask a question real quick or before we let him go?
Let's see, Ty says, in big games, are refs told to swallow the whistle at times?
I'll make my comment, comment, you guys, that I've always told my officials, I was lucky enough to have three crews work three national championships at the N A I A Division Three and the Division Two level. My biggest comment was, boy, only call the big ones, you know, make, make the big ones, get those unsportsmanlike, those personal fouls. Leave a little crap alone. I mean, if you in the first quarter, if the left tackle twitches and you throw him for an illegal procedure or whatever else, now you've set a standard for the rest of the game. One of the things I would say, I, I use the, the last two national championships in Division Two. Division, the last one was run, worked by a crew out of Lone Star, didn't have a lot of fouls, they picked up the big stuff, but boy, let me tell you, they controlled the field. I mean, from the time of warmups until the end of the game, they were between people. This is something I look for when I'm looking for young officials, they were stepping between people. They were talking to people, the umpire didn't have to throw the flag, he was stepping in between people. So I don't think it's a matter of swallowing the whistle, but I think what the, the point is that, hey, you can do an awful lot more with your presence. You know, we're, right now we're going to a mechanic where they want some officials out on the field ninety minutes before the ballgame. You know, well, and that's tough in D two and D three, but they're doing it because the officials are the ones that will step up and will control things. Sometimes coaches, maybe not so much. And so I think one of the big things is, is hey, if you're going to work a, a state championship game, you're going to work a national championship game at my level. I want to see that you're communicating, you're controlling things with your voice, not so much by just throwing the flag. I've got one conference and I've talked to the coordinator about it and I've watched him on video, instead of getting between people, they throw a flag. They lead the nation in fouls, unsportsmanlike and personal fouls in Division Two. I don't think that's a good thing. I think you want to be somebody that's in the middle or the bottom part of that by controlling the game and not, not trying to just throw the flag. So yeah, don't necessarily swallow your whistle, but basically just call the big stuff.
Good dead ball officiating, preventive officiating, is what I, is what I just understood.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
So if nobody has any, any questions, Dana, you back? You there?
Back. This is, this is fun. I'm, I don't know what I, I don't know what sport this is, but it's fun. I just miss football, I know that. I'm sorry, got that. So Mike, I just wanted to thank you again for being here for us tonight and I'll make sure I watch the recorded version of this since I just saw little bits and pieces of it, but as you know, at this level, we really do appreciate our coaching partners and professional partners, you know, looking back and giving you back to the, the high school officials because we all get better through your presence and through your content and giving us everything that you are giving for us and spending your time with us on what I believe has been Thursday night. And if there's, if there's anything to be, and I'm almost making sure that we're at, in the circle.
Great. Well, thank you very much for having me, you guys. Have a good night and best of luck this season.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Appreciate it.
Thank you, good night. And let's see, tomorrow, on Friday, we have Tim Schroder, five P M. He's a Pac-12 umpire, he's going to be talking, giving a presentation on, I believe it's offensive holding related to high school rules, five-man mechanics. Saturday, NFL referee Scott Novak, ten A M, talking about the game day, pre-game and the referee position. So I think we're fortunate enough, very fortunate that this is the third NFL white hat in three weeks, I believe. That has come to talk to us. So make sure you don't miss it. It could be fun.
Hey, thanks everybody. Before we get off, does anybody have any topics or questions you'd like to bring up with Dennis and I and Dana before we end this, this evening?
Let me check the chat. I think, I think, I think we're good.
Okay.
I really appreciate you guys doing this. You guys have really stepped up and it, it's not going to, on those on my part at least, I'm sure everybody else agrees.
Yep, thanks Brad, appreciate it. And we'll talk to you guys tomorrow night.
Thanks guys.
Yeah, see you then.
Thank you.
Goodnight everyone.
Night.